Absolutely. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get it kicked off Tuesday December 18th, 2018, 1:30 meeting. I need a motion to amend the agenda. Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second that motion to suspend the rules.
We got a second by Dr. Tisdale. Lucy, could you read the amendment? Oh, okay, we needed to go ahead and take a vote, all right. All in favor? Okay, six zero, motion carries.
To our policy agenda, we're adding item 4AA ordinance pertaining to a non-exclusive franchise and right of use for public rights away to Telpac Networks Incorporated. And to our consent agenda, we're adding 5S, which is a resolution authorizing and accepting a memorandum of agreement with MDOT for Biloxi Main Street.
Okay, and is that with the amended page seven also with it? Okay.
We're gonna amend that on the floor.
We're gonna amend that on the floor, okay. All right, we got a motion to accept the amended agenda. I need a motion. Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? All in favor? Six zero, motion carry. We're gonna start off with the mayor's report.
Mr. President, thank you. Welcome everyone to our last meeting of 2018. It's been a great year, 2019, we're looking forward to the future, but welcome everyone to this, the final deal. Couple of things, I'm gonna ask Mike and of course Andy Osslet to come up and give us a report, but wanted to give you an update. The Thunderbirds were in town today, and they had a little news conference at the visitor center, so we're really excited about, you know, a couple of hundred thousand people coming to visit that show on the beach. So it's the Joint Keesler-Biloxi Air and Space Show is what we're pitching, and I think there'll be some things in the media regarding that, but it's gonna be truly an exciting time of year, and I think we had Linda Hornsby from the Hotel and Motel Association giving an update about, I think it was 97% occupancy that weekend. So this is a good way to start, you know, the April, the summer season, excuse me, May 4th and 5th. So anyway, it's, you know, been a great year, look forward to the next year, but I'm gonna ask Mike to give us some updates on some infrastructure projects and things that are happening.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Last week, we submitted three bridge projects, three projects to repair bridges in the city to the governor's emergency road and bridge repair fund. If those projects are selected, each one of them would be 100% paid through the governor's road and repair fund. So those bridges we talked about once before is the Cedar Lake Bridge, is a small bridge on Old Route 67, and a bridge on Porter Avenue. All three of those were eligible and hopefully will be selected. Related, also similar, on your agenda today are three different memorandums of understanding that are 80/20 matches with MDOT. That's for Will Market Sidewalks, Main Street Railroad Crossing, and Cedar Lake Bridge. So we've got Cedar Lake Bridge, you'll note, submitted in two different programs, so we're hoping one of the two of them will pop. These match funds for all three were included in our proposed 2019 geo-bond project listings. So once MDOT approves those plans and the MOUs, the projects will be shovel-ready when the bond funds are available. So that's Will Market Sidewalks, the Main Street Railroad Crossing, and the Cedar Lake Bridge. All of them will be ready in the spring when the bond funds are available. And I think what the mayor would like at this point, we'd like to invite Andy Osslet up to give you a little background on one of the other items that's on the agenda today, that is the Mardi Gras museum.
She's president of the Mardi Gras museum, so she's the leader, and she'll give us an update. Thank you, Andy.
Hello and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to all. I am the president of the Mardi Gras Museum Board for this year, and as we all know, the Mardi Gras museum has been in flux for several years, has not been opened, has not been generating any income really, and that's what happened to the building that we were in. We understood that the city needed to move forward and start, you know, making some money on some of these buildings that were just sitting in the city with nothing going on in them. We get that. But we were kind of surprised at the sale back in May hitting the front page of the paper, and we didn't even know it was gonna happen. That being said, we wanna move forward with a first-class, really nice Mardi Gras museum for the entire Mississippi Gulf Coast. We have a location, we've gone through, I mean, I've been working on this project for months, trying to find a good location and one that makes sense for everyone. Right now, the frontrunner is the old Merkiston Hall Building where now David Machado's, Machado Patano, their engineering firm is in there. The bottom floor of that building, which is on Howard Avenue to the west side, is open and available for us to go in, fix that up, make it right, and make it the right type of museum that we can advertise, we can push within this entire community with the casinos, with restaurants, with our visitors for tourism, to come to that and see what our history is all about as far as Mardi Gras goes. I have committed to see this project through, and I will tell you it's no small feat, because when we moved everything out, and I got everything out of the Mardi Gras museum in November, because it's time for us to move forward on this. I'm not gonna fool around, we're gonna move forward as quickly as we possibly can. As soon as I have some drawings from the architect, I will start going to several contractors to talk to them about the build-out of this building. We're getting a shell, is what we're gonna get, but we're gonna need to go in there and make it right. It's almost good that we are getting a shell, because now we can do it the way we feel like we need it to be done. And it's, and we will charge admission, we will have a nice little gift shop in there, we're going to have some things that are gonna draw people to that location. It is right there on Howard Avenue, it couldn't be in a better spot, right across from the Shuckers, you know, stadium. We can invite people from there to go through it, you know, keep it open maybe a few extra hours when there was a Shuckers game. Do some really good positive marketing on this project and make this part of the community. And we just really, really hope that we've got the city's support on that, because it's very important, I think, for all of us to continue that heritage and continue, you know, just teaching people about it. Everyone is so interested when they come to town, what is Mardi Gras? Where, you know, they're so stunned if they're from anywhere else, that they get to see a piece of that, and it's time that we get that open, make it nice, make it a first-class, you know, experience for people that come in there and worth their, you know, whatever we're gonna end up charging for admission, worth their $5, $10, whatever it's gonna be, make it worth their while, and make them wanna maybe make another donation. We do have donors that have given us money to the Mardi Gras museum that we're gonna have to acknowledge. We have rooms that were supposed to be named after them. I'm hoping to do kind of a walk of fame in front of it with the big, the big ones like they have in Hollywood for people, and maybe sell some of those too, so that we've got some more support as far as, you know, financial for that. We're gonna have to have an opening, we're gonna have to do some more things like that, but, and we may have to do this in phases. I hope not, I hope that we can move in, plow forward, and get that thing open, so that way we can start making some money there. The second thing I really would like to talk about is 12th Night. I'd just like for you all to put that on your calendars now. That is Saturday, January the 5th, and we are going to start at the visitor's center at 5 o'clock with a reception there, and then we will move, the floats will come around, we will turn off the lights on the lighthouse, then we're going to parade down 90, come down Le Muse, we may make a little other little jaunt, we're gonna see if the float will move around, maybe down here somewhere, then turn on the lights here at City Hall, which in all honesty at this point, this is where we should be turning on the lights for the, you know, beginning of the Mardi Gras season. So we're gonna do some lights out front here that will be changed for the season, and then it will be a really nice celebration right across the street. I've already got a bunch of restaurants involved to bring food, and working with Bill Raymond on tents and all those, you know, other logistics, but it'll be a nice night, and I really would like for everyone to be there, because we'd like to recognize that council is a viable part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And let me just say, we're real pleased that you're the leader in this thing, everything you do is great, and I know all your energy and creativity will make this a very, you know, a great project. Thanks, Andy. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Next on agenda, departmental reports. We have an update from Oscarinda.
We installed some more surface course of asphalt over the last couple of weeks on the east end of the project. Right now, if you happen to drive down Oak Street, it looks like we're tearing it apart again. What it is, is we installed all the sidewalks as per plans, and there were, because there's a lot of vacant lots, there were driveways that weren't denoted on the plans that we had to go back and cut, put the driveways in. We're gonna have to do some grading work to get the driveways accessible. So anyways, that's all stuff that needed to be done before we installed surface course of asphalt on Oak Street, so we just, we went ahead and we're doing that, working it out with the city. And that's also on Crawford, same thing on Crawford. In the mix on some of the parts of Crawford, there are some areas of sidewalk where they might not be ADA codes, that Oscarinda messed up, so we're fixing those as well. So it's not 100% change order work, some of it's just punch-out work is what we call it, fix things, get them right. That's on the east end of the project. We go down to the west end of the project on Porter, the Jack and Boar is complete, we've tied the sewer in to the north side of the tracks, and we're backfilling. Then we have the storm drain left on Porter, tying it into the south side of the tracks, and some drainage work and a little bit of water work in the CSX right-of-way, just north of the tracks. We will be moving at the first of the year, the curb, the guys with, we've installed road base on Querons, we'll be moving the curbing machine over there, laying curbing, and at the first of the year installing asphalt on Querons. Graham, I think we're trying to get the asphalt down on Graham next week, but if not next week, it'll be at the beginning of the year, but Graham and Querons are just about ready We are finished installing the sewer services on Bone, then we have, gonna drop back and get, we have about 327 feet of storm drain that has to be laid, then we can, at the beginning of the year, rock asphalt on Bone Street. We're moving back into, we call it the problem area, GRN 1 and 2, that's north of Division, Raynor, Anglada, Fayard, that whole area up there. And I say that just because it's a well-known fact that there's just a lot of design errors in that particular phase. Anyways, we're on Percy today, we moved back into the area, we're installing the storm drain, road base will be Anglada, Fayard, and Strawberry, then Raynor, and we'll be methodically getting back into that area. We are doing sidewalks everywhere, Bradford, Hayes, Delany, Le Muse, so we, and then right behind that, I mean, we're doing landscaping on Le Muse as well, so right behind that, we're doing the landscaping. And then when we come at the beginning of the year, we'll make a big push for the fencing, to get caught up with a lot of the fencing. Nixon, north of Division, is ready to be paved. If the, I'll probably know after this meeting, either it's gonna be Friday, or the Wednesday and Thursday after Christmas, we'll be paving Nixon, north of Division. We have some area on Midway to finish up right next to the Health Building, that'll get done. On Le Muse, the, Le Muse and Esters, that doctor's office, we're paving, putting some asphalt paving on their driveway and parking area, and then, like I said, hopefully Graham. Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, thank you for being here today. Any idea when work may start on the north end of Raynor, north of Division? I know you said there were design errors, so those have to be corrected.
Well, we're, no, there's, on north of Division, there were design errors, they've changed the plans to just increase the quantity of storm drains and increase the quantity of pipe. So there's, as far as we know, there's no more design issues up there, so, but because there were so many issues, that's just kind of the last area that we're getting to. So we should be getting there, like I said, where Anglada, Fayard, and then Raynor.
And what would be the next signs of progress? Would it be curbs and gutters going down?
We still have to install storm drains.
Okay, so storm drain work.
The roads are gonna, they're gonna get ripped up, you know, we're gonna be digging again.
Gotcha, all right, thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Newman? Ms. Deming? Ms. Glavine?
No.
Ms. Barrett?
George?
Okay, and I only have just something real quick, appreciate you guys cleaning up Division Street. It looked really good once it got good and swept up. Of course, we're getting into the holidays, so, you know, if you just kinda, we're gonna be taking off, just kinda brush up a little bit for us, so we can have a pretty good Merry Christmas. And grading along the railroad tracks, I know after the rains, it get a little bumpy in that area, and if you can just kinda stay on top of coming off the railroad tracks, you know, Esters Boulevard and Fayard Street, those are the main ones. I get a lot of calls on those, so, other than that, thank you for your, for coming.
Thank you. One other thing, I guess I forgot to add is just, just to remind everybody that hopefully watches this video, to just try and keep, keep the speeds, the speed limit throughout the construction area is 15 miles per hour. There's a lot more asphalt down, but, so everybody wants to go faster, everybody passes people up, and so we're doing sidewalk work and landscaping right now on those streets, and it just, it's really dangerous for the guys, so I just ask everybody to please be mindful of that and keep the speed limit. And then, a lot of the orange bags that filter the sand and sediment from getting into the waterways, we've been picking a lot of them up, we've been removing a lot of them, because if there's, other best management practices are in place, meaning we have grass growing, and we're not working in that area, and we've swept the streets, well, we don't need to have them, so we're, and it's something we don't have to maintain, so we're picking them up, but in the areas where they are there, they're required to be there, so we just kinda remind everybody to please not to move the bags.
Okay, and of course, one of my big requests, because of speeding, to kinda maybe somehow between you and Walt, workout, striping, because that scares me, people are passing people up. I know we had a good police presence the last couple of days, but we still wanna be safe, and people could, you know, possibly get injured or have a bad accident for going around each other, because that, as you said, it is happening.
It does.
But thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, that concludes the departmental reports. We're gonna start off with our council report. I'm gonna go with Ms. Newman first. No report? Mr. Deming?
I don't have much of a report, but I wanna wish everyone happy holidays, and Ms. Bell, if we could get together after the meeting to talk about the stuff over at the Causeway Park and at the sports area across from Marcus' area.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Thank you. I hope everybody has a nice, safe Christmas and New Years as well. I'm getting questions from business owners on Howard Avenue, I think they're the same people that asked George last week, the same questions. They're eager for Howard Avenue to open to traffic, is there any timeline? When can they expect it to be open? What all has to be done?
At the end of January, I think we're doing some, some water replacement of some lines on the section between Le Muse and Main Street. So that's gonna happen, so it probably won't be, you know, to complete where you can drive on bricks to Main Street, well, probably in January sometime. Pedestrian, we may be able to open for pedestrians first Friday.
You said the water lines were at?
We're replacing some very old water lines between, on Howard Avenue between Le Muse and Main Street, and that was, on the fly, that, yeah, we're concerned about the settlement and breaking the line that's been there since 100 years. Okay, anyway, so that's what the.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I wanna wish everybody also a Merry Christmas. This'll be our last council meeting before we celebrate Christmas and New Years. Wow, some of us is our sixth Christmas on the city council. George, you probably, this is your, what, 17th? 18th Christmas? Whatever it is, but.
BC.
No, it's, again, and I've reiterated this before, it's a privilege to work with my colleagues on the council and the mayor, and to represent our citizens, and then all the hard work that our directors do, and all the employees of this great city, and our citizens definitely have expectations, and we work hard to exceed those. We had a few groundbreaking or ribbon-cutting ceremonies this past week with the chamber, they do a great work as well, and that's great to see. Boy, what a magical time, I've been able to go to some events at North Bay Elementary and see those kindergartners and first graders and second graders just gleaming their eye in expectations, you know, about Christmas itself, whether we're doing Christmas readings, programs out there, and I, for me, I got a seven-year-old grandson and a two-year-old, almost two-year-old grandson, and they're still, they still can't wait to see what's underneath that Christmas tree. So it's a magical time. Everybody have a safe holiday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett?
I'd like to echo, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'd like to give a shout-out to our Public Works Department who teamed up with Harrison County and got a major culvert changed out on Lorraine Road, so that we can go forward with paving that. They did it really quick, so we didn't have to alter our parade route. We had our Christmas parade on Saturday, a new route, several of the councilmen, the mayor attended, and we had a great crowd, and looking for that to get bigger and better each year, I'd like to give a shout-out to Sherri Bell and her team, they worked really hard on that, as well as our police department, Public Works, getting the cones out to block the roads off. So each department within the city worked very hard to make that happen, I appreciate y'all doing that, and it means a lot to those people out there, because, you know, many of you know they haven't had a lot going on in many years, so, you know, it's not a big thing, because we have parades down here all the time, but for them out there, that's a big thing, so I appreciate all y'all's help on that. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Ms. Lawrence?
I also like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We'll have a meeting before New Years, I figure the 28th, to pay all the bills, I tend to, yeah, we normally do that, so, if not, then, that's why I figure we're not gonna do Happy New Years yet, just in case. You'll come up with something, folks, we'll have a meeting the 28th, you can write it down. You'll come up with somebody we have to meet, whether it's just to have a toddy.
Always good to meet.
But anyway, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, everything's been great, weather's been off and on, but Nathan said the parade was great out there at Will Market, that's what you need, stuff like that for the kids, those are good things, that's some of the things that you enjoy doing on the council, other than getting beat up and paying bills, but there's some good things we get to do, you know. I have some questions for later when a couple of these things come up, I need to get some answers to a few things, so, we'll just go with that, but everybody have a Merry Christmas, and always be safe, that's the key, and don't drink and drive, just drink.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And again, I like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Nathan, I enjoyed myself at the Christmas parade, thank you for inviting me, my son had a wonderful time.
Can I add something else?
Go ahead.
I had the coolest outfit at the Christmas parade, too. Hands down.
Mayor, thank you for coming out, supporting the block captains, they do a marvelous job in the community. Kudos to the chief, allowing them to come up and decorate the police department, different things like that, so it's a very good, it's enjoyable to see the police department working with our community. So thank you again, chief, for all what you do. Let's see, and I think that's about it, that's pretty much all I have. I think I'll use the remainder of my time, I have someone who wanna come up and just talk briefly about the homeless situation, so we'll give them about five or six minutes to do that.
Ladies and gentlemen, first and foremost, my name is Bertrand Easton. I am currently the president and co-founder of a nonprofit organization called Easton and Kelly Organization. Now, for me to have to make that introduction, three minutes is not enough time, with all due respect.
Excuse me, Mr. Easton, you'll have, you'll have to really, you'll almost have to eat the microphone. I just know, I can barely hear you, and I imagine people in the back. That's fine.
That's good, okay, great. Don't tell them I'm lying, I don't need no bad picture shots. Guys, look, like I said, three minutes is not enough time for me to share with you what I have to share with you. It's serious. It's gotten to the point where it's dead serious. I stand before a lot of people that I know, in respect, not in fear, not even in anger. You not even know my situation, which I will briefly explain. I've sat and I listened, I listen well, I listen a lot, and I've heard a lot of things, which is unfortunate, I've heard. This day is the day that the Lord has made, not I. He said, "We shall rejoice and be glad in it." We believe it, we preach it, we stand on it, we swear on it, we congregate on it, we counsel on it, this is what this is a council. I know the value of time, I actually know my value, I know your value, I know your value, I know your value, and yours, and yours. Scripture say, "With love and kindness have I drawn thee." Preacher's preaching, do you believe it? It's not a question, it's not a question. Oh, how I put my trust in man. Can you hear me still? How I put my trust in man. And what has it cost me but pain, suffering, heartache, because I put my trust in man. Never did I forget God, always been a God for every man. I've talked to. I've talked to millions of people. I've met millions of people. Most of you ain't had no me personally. Come to Waffle House, I serve you, take care of you. Welcome to Waffle House. My name's Bert. Would you like to try our all-star special? Yes. Mr. Creel used to come and eat with us every day. Appreciate you. I thank God for you, man. You've encouraged me. You're my brother. You've encouraged me. My skin may always be a different color, but we bleed this color here. My shirt says a lot. It says it all. Enough is enough. It's enough. No more. I can't take it no more. I refuse to. I refuse to. No weapon have I on my body, none, no weapon, but one. And you hear it. This is a weapon. It's a weapon.
Okay, Ms. Easton, I gave you six minutes. Now please.
Can I please have another person's time? Just so that it's for the public. Will they give us three, they give us three minutes? Can, can someone please allow me their time? Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Is that okay, sir?
No, that's, you're on my time right now, sir.
Okay, well, when the public agenda come, if it's okay for I come back up? Because what's being said to me now is that I can't express myself. We have the freedom of speech and I can't speak. I can't speak and tell you what I had to tell you in three minutes, but you don't want to listen?
No, I'm giving you, I gave you six minutes of my time.
I understand, sir. May I have six minutes of anyone else's time or those three minutes there? I could please, if you do not, I'm not disrespecting you, I'm asking. Cause I could tell you today, if I only have your attention this day, you would never be the same again. Never. Never. You got to, want to hear what I got to say. Give me the opportunity. I stand before you, Councilman Gains.
Okay, well, please go, go carry it.
Please, 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 please. What I wanted to do was introduce to you the organization. And if I'm on your time, then I do apologize. But I believe we have people here. Could you please stand up for me, guys? Could you please stand up for me? Could you please stand up? I believe these people that are standing up here today, they've had enough of saying how much time they can have. They've had enough. How can you correct the problem that you created? Two thousand years. I, I tell you today, can fix that problem in one day. Every problem that you ever had, this day can change. You'll no longer have to worry no more. You'll no longer have to die no more. You talk to me like you know who I am. You do not know me. You have seven houses, you told me, here in Biloxi, yet I see one homeless man. Stand up, man. Two homeless men, come to me, both of you, please. Two homeless men I, I see standing before me, but you say your family has seven or better homes here in Biloxi, Mississippi. You tell me this. And here it is. I'm looking now at one man. Come here, man. What is your name, brother? Are you homeless? This man is homeless! And you talk to me like you know time. Give me a second, brother. You talk to me like you know time and you tell me I have three minutes, five minutes. I have eternity. Don't you talk to me like that. Don't disrespect me by time because you don't know what it is. I'm gonna tell you today what it is. You understand? You can nod your head. Thank you. Now, with that being said, these shirts are not on this display to make you look bad. I am not here to make you look bad, man. You my brother! Not here to make you look mad, not bad. I ain't anger you. I'm here only to give you what you've been promised. You say you love God. How can you love God and hate your brother who's standing here nationally on TV telling you he has no home? How can you tell me? You cannot tell me you love God, man. That's what you are, man. You cannot tell me, let me finish talking, brother, please. You cannot tell me you love God and this man has no word to lay his head? He's a human being. He bleeds red like you, 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 you. The whole capital bleeds the same color. Two thousand years have you had your opportunity to fix things. Ain't nothing fixed yet. I heard everyone's solution, everyone's plot, everyone's plan. We're gonna do this. Tomorrow's not promised to you? Who promised it to you? Did you not know whose balance of life your hands lie into? You are the mayor of this city. Where is your third, uh, party that was here? Could you please, I need, that is, that is great. Thank you, sir. I was just asking kindly. Now, this man does not have to be homeless. I don't even know what homeless is. No, openly, I'll tell you, I do know what homeless is. In my pocket, I carry it with me to remind me where I come from, what I've been through, and all I'm getting is an identification card. Please lower your weapons. This identification card shows you my state of homelessness. In two thousand and fourteen, when this organization came into existence, I took my family. God revealed something to me and, uh, showed me my family. My, my dreams, my hopes, my wishes, my dreams and my hopes and my wishes. It's only that we could all live together and be happy. I prayed for this. I cried for this.
Mr. Easton?
Yes.
I'm gonna, uh-
I understand. I understand, sir.
I gave you more than six minutes.
But I do appreciate that.
Coming up.
Sir, if I could just finish this right here, I just want to, my, my, the whole purpose was to come to introduce to you-
I give you thirty seconds to finish up, sir.
My whole purpose was to come to you, to introduce to you a solution to your problem, Mayor. I come, I stand in front of you humbly, humbly. You have the key to this city. You have the key to this city.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. I appreciate everything.
Mayor, 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 that's okay. It's, this time is up. This time is up. Okay, we're gonna move on to our public agenda. We got a total of forty-five minutes, three minutes per person. Would anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? Okay, would you come in, sign your name, give you your name and address?
My name is John. I live in Biloxi on the streets. Um, there's some of us out there willing to work. There, there's some options. Oh, I'm sorry. There's some of us out there willing to work. Um, the problem I've had, I've gotten three jobs out there and, and within a month, you have to wait a month for a paycheck. And within that month, man, I fall off because I'm not going to feeding, so I'm not eating and I'm sleeping on cold or hot concrete at night and working all day. Um, if we could get something where people that are willing to work can have some kind of housing so they can get on their feet, like a halfway house? That's not an expensive, uh, 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 fix. And also if we could get some tools, maybe, maybe some, some jobs like cleaning up trash along the side of the streets or something like that, somewhere we can help each other. We're working on the homeless problem and, and working on our problem, being homeless and, and jobless. And, uh, if there's anything that I could do, it'd be much appreciated and I, I wish you all happy holidays and, uh, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. That was great. Anyone else on my left? Ms. Stallings?
Councilmen and women, how you doing? Happy holidays. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm, uh, seeing all of the, um, construction and different things going on. And, um, would just hope that, um, sooner rather than later, the construction and different projects will get finished. Cause it, it really does cause a, a burden, um, especially for, uh, the tourists and the people in the community when you don't know which way to turn on the different streets and the different information. If it could be just updated on the website or different information. I, I do hear tourists and just different people in the community, even people who live in the community. Um, when streets are closed and things are blocked off and things, I mean, it just makes it, causes a burden for people. So I would just definitely love to see, um, better flow and better communication, if it could be put on a website or if it could be text alerts, just different ways in which we could flow the communication. Uh, I just wanted to add a suggestion of that. Um, happy holidays to everybody in and around the community and I hope your families are safe and sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stallings. Anyone else on my left?
Mr. Gains, I, if you will, I just wanted to, to comment. I know that there's a video update of what's going on with the north infrastructure project and also what's going on with south of the tracks. I think that's posted on the city's website, Mr. Creel. About every month or so, I think there's a video. Right, and on the city's website, I think, uh, the end of the week, they post what the traffic issues may be. Again, that's on the city's website, so it's out there. It may not be easily found. Apparently, Mr. Creel says it's easily found, but, uh, there's, there's a link across the top that says traffic. And then I think, uh, there's one that says video, so it's, it's out there.
Just suggestions, you know, just friendly suggestions.
And you can also sign up for the, uh, text alert because I get all the text alerts whenever there's some construction, road blockage, things like that. So it's out there. So just kind of sign up for it. It's, it's downstairs or Vincent can get you the, the, the text thing.
Sounds great, but just make it more applicable for, like I said, tourists and just different other people. Cause even though we're in the city, there are other people that come to visit our great city and great coastal city.
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else to my left? Come, come on, let's just have a seat. Give me your-
How you doing today, sir? My name is Rosebud Anthony Crockett. Um, I came up here because I actually thought it was, um, a job convenient thing going on and my friend told me to follow him. Something going on at the city hall about jobs. And when I got up here, I never expected all this, but I just want to speak on my behalf and everybody who knows me. Like you can ask anybody about me. Like I'm twenty-five, I'm a father of two and the third child I claim is mine. But I get out here, I help my community and I do more, like I try to do what I can. I'm not blessed with a lot. I'm not rich, I'm not poor, but God blessed me. You know what I'm saying? I'm thankful for what I have. I'm thankful for what I don't have. But what I'm saying is, we need more like job opportunities for our homeless, because I speak on behalf of my friends back here. And you can ask them. I get out and I feed them. I give them clothes off my back if I have to. I'm homeless myself. The only reason why I have residence is because of my girlfriend. And people think she twelve because she's so short. She's thirty. You know what I'm saying? But I'm just saying on my behalf, if it wasn't for my girlfriend, I would be homeless like my friends. And it was just like seven months ago, I was in that position. You see what I'm saying? And I'm just coming home from prison. You can ask her, the stuff that I've been through for the past months and years, like literally, I'm a, a Mississippian. I was born in Gulfport and I stayed here in Biloxi for ten years now. I'd have been pistol-whipped a year ago by a parole officer. She'll tell you, she was with me by my side the whole year. That's why I love this girl. She just witnessed me getting slammed on my face three weeks ago by a Biloxi cop for public drunk and the beer wasn't even open. I have court January the seventh. She just asked me two days ago, babe, when's your court date? You see what I'm saying? But then what I'm saying on my behalf, the police get out here and harass people every day. They just told two, three people of mine, they was like, oh, we're gonna get out here and get in everybody pockets every day if we can. Well, what's that for? I mean, I'm a non-violent person, but then yet I get harassed by police and don't even do nothing. I can't even sit on the corner like one time, me and my girl sitting behind McDonald's. We sitting on the curb, just talking, babe, what we gonna do tomorrow? Like how we gonna make some money? What we gonna do? Cut Uncle Grass, plant a garden? Police pull up, excuse me, sir, you're destructing of, uh, uh, destruction of city property. You have to move, sir. You can't see her, you're going to jail. I don't understand that. I mean, I'm not bothering nobody. I don't have no gun to nobody head saying, give me money. I'm not harassing nobody. I'm not begging nobody for nothing. I'm just sitting here having a peaceful conversation with my girl. It's stuff like this that really matters, though. You see what I'm saying? It's my voice that really matters because of the simple fact, I come from the bottom. I come from what don't nobody speak up about people like me because of the simple fact, they don't get out here and help my community. I done seen people being raped. I done seen people being tortured. I done seen people being shot, stabbed and killed. But then yet I don't say nothing. I ain't even know this was going on, but then yet God blessed me to be here to speak on my behalf. You see what I'm saying? So I just want to speak on my behalf that he is right enough is enough. Because you have to literally, like my mother said, don't nothing come to a man, excuse my language, y'all, but don't nothing come to a man who sits on his ass all day. Excuse my language and excuse my French. But I get off my butt, three-thirty in the morning, you ask my girl, should you get aggravated? And she get tired, six something, seven something in the morning. I get up every day. It's a mission with me. It's not no one-day thing like, oh, I'm finna do this one day to show the world that I look good or I look cool. No, it's not for that. It's not for them. It's to help the next person around you, whether it be a man, female, child, it can be a baby. Cause I get out here and kids love me to death. Kids don't even know me, can't even talk, and when they see me, they smile just because of the simple fact, I talk to them. I sit down and do stuff that their parents won't do. Their parents so busy, oh, uh, I'm doing meetings, oh, this, oh, this and that and the third. Stop, pause. That's all you gotta do. Realize what's going on around you. Sit, sit down for once and just sit on that corner right there. I promise you, you'll see so much going on just by sitting down. That's why God said peace be still. Sit down and you'll see so much going on around you. And I, I, I'm only twenty-five, you feel me? My life is so fast. I'm ADHD and ADD, excuse me, y'all, but I'm, I'm, I'm in a rush because I be so, so busy in a, in a, in a rush, you know what I'm saying? Like I got something to lose time. But my thing is, I done did time. I done gave these folks five years of my life. I'm not trying to do no more time. I did something that I regret and I was young and I was dumb, but now I'm trying to move forward in life. The thing is, it's time for change.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, sir. That was, that was a great testimony. Alrighty. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Yes, come on up. Please sign in, give me your name and address.
How y'all doing? My name is Leo Carney at Three O'Eight Keller Avenue. I just want to, uh, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, uh, Happy New Year.
I'll probably be here before, before New Years, though. You'll, you'll see me again. One of the things I, I would like to do is just to, to try to piggyback off of what these young men are saying. And it's what, it's, it's what I've been trying to do. I know, I know, uh, Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Creel, you all see me at every, probably every meeting. And I try to, and I try to get a, a good grasp of what's going on in our communities, not just the Second War community and every community here in Biloxi. And what I am seeing, I am seeing a growing homeless population. I am, I am seeing that. And what I have done, I have gone on, uh, our city's website and have looked. And, and I did notice, I think me and Mr. Gains talked about this before, about our, the community development block grant program that we had, uh, previous before, Mr. Gill, you, you, uh, you weren't here then. This is a new administration. But some of that money, what is supposed to be allocated for people like the, you know, the, the homeless. And, you know, it, and there are mechanisms in place that we can track the homeless. Uh, when, when they, when they come out of jail like this young man or, uh, juvenile detention centers or in, in different aspects of their life where, where they be unemployed. Uh, there, there are ways that we can probably, that we can track the homeless through, uh, uh, I, I, I'm not sure as far as how that, how that, that program works. But I, I think there's a way that we could track the homeless. Some of that money, um, was allocated, I think, for like the, 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 the Sangha Theater. Uh, which, which in my, in my opinion, that, that, you know, that, that, that could have been, we could have taken money from, uh, somewhere else and helped, uh, you know, we could have fixed the homeless, I mean, uh, the Sangha Theater some other way and maybe have helped the homeless, you know, with, with, with that money. I, I, you know, again, I, 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 I wasn't, I wasn't here and I wasn't abreast of, you know, all of what was going on in two thousand and sixteen. But here we are in two thousand and eighteen and again, we're faced with a growing homeless population. Um, I know we just talked about, uh, funds that have been allocated for each ward for different projects. But I would like to see some of those, uh, funds allocated, you know, toward, toward our, our, our homes. And, and, and that may be a way that we can, that we can mitigate, uh, uh, some of the, some of this problem, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Anyone else to my left? Come on, Reverend.
First off, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Ho, ho, ho. Now, I want to talk about something that's going on in the city of Biloxi. And, uh, I want to tell you that we have Mississippi Coast, uh, MississippiCoastTV.com now online. We're talking about city politics again. I'm back. Uh, I want to first off, I want to first off say that we need a sudden amendment because there's so many people fighting over this three-minute time limit for the people to speak. Why don't we do a holiday cheer and say, look, next meeting, we're gonna extend it to six minutes per person. You got forty-five minutes for each person, uh, to do all these comments. You wonder why a lot of people don't want to come to the city council is because they only got three minutes and then you got the lady over here ringing the bell and blowing the horn, saying your time's up. You gotta get off. You're over. Okay? My bottom line about the homeless situation is gonna be simple and sweet. We have too many shelters on this end of town. We have the Seashore on Division Street. We have the Back Bay Mission. We have the Loaves and Fishes. By the time everything's over and said, done, this is why we have so many homeless people in one area. And we're the one that's faced with the judgment right now. And I'm not being critical on some of the shelters, uh, needs. But what I'm saying is, we need to come to a decision of what we're gonna do about the homeless population in downtown Biloxi. Because come summertime, it's gonna be tourist season again. And more people continue to- And more people continue to invade the city of Biloxi, as they continue to invade the Biloxi area, somebody needs to say, we need to sit down and really have a meeting, all of you at the city council. Not just the mayor, but the mayor needs to be involved, too, and he needs to come out and say what his opinion is. We can't build a shelter for these people, because every time you put up an amendment, like the one on the, uh, east, uh, west end of Biloxi, you're gonna do with the school, there was people that came out and said, we don't want that in my neighborhood, okay? We need to devise some kinda plan, that either you set up a warehouse, that sets army-type cots in it, and you work with them. Some of these homeless people really want a job, but they don't, they don't wanna go and, and beg for a job. In New Orleans, they put people on the street to work, and give them an opportunity to put a little cash in their pocket. Your budgets that you decide on every year, every year here in the city of Biloxi, the budgets you decide on, you could save money by hiring some of the homeless people and taking care of it. Some of them don't wanna work, I'm gonna be honest with you, I've done reports on this on MississippiCoastTV.com, if you wanna see the reports, you can. Okay, here comes the dame, I'm sorry, I went over my limit, I apologize, but how about, after, after the first of January, why don't y'all make an amendment and say, we'll give you six minutes instead of three, and give the people a chance to come to these meetings and make their statements now.
Alright, thank you, Reverend.
Happy Halloween, okay, you know what to come up with, I'm going.
Anyone else to my left? Anyone else to my left?
I'm homeless here in Biloxi, I'm, I'm a resident here in Biloxi, I've been here forty-four years.
Cause you're speaking to the microphone.
I've been forty, I've been here forty-four years, my name is Robert Lee Washington. I have, I have volunteered since I've been homeless, I lost my, my mother and my father, I became homeless. I had a reason to move away, but I, I decided to come back, because I had a job that had favoritism in it, but they sold out the company, and moved on, you know what I'm saying? So, that left me homeless, I, I found another job here, I got people that, that likes my work, ethnic, but at the same time, I can't read or write, so it stops me from filling out applications on computers and whistling, and I'm homeless, and here, and I, I'm telling people this, but at the same time, I don't have the help that I need. If I can just get somebody to help me out with application, I can get a job, and I can keep it. But since I don't have a house or anything, since I had, I was working at the fillers station, I had a, I had a job, it was giving me a chance, I made like forty, forty, no, twenty, no, forty-six hundred, but I was trying to get five thousand until I could get a house, and buy me a car, no, buy me a car and give me a, pay for my rent. But I couldn't do it, because I had people on my job that just didn't want me to be there, cause I was homeless, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left? Anyone to my right?
Good evening. I'm Demetrius Easton, co-founder of EKO Organization, one of the guys, truth mentor to that guy. So, we, we, the council meeting, I heard before, this is my first council session, it's supposed to be about the homeless, the homeless came, they asked for what they needed, and I feel that we should sup, we should supply to them what they need. We are implementing, EKO is implementing a plan to resolve that problem, at least, you know, for the homeless that are out here in the street that we can see right now. I'm not gonna hold your time, but I think everybody said what they had to say to you. I appreciate everybody listening, give us a chance, and we're gonna try to do something about the homelessness.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else to my right? Okay, well, that concludes citizen comments. We're gonna move on to the policy agenda. We got ordinance first reading, Lucy, A.A.
Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise right of use and occupy public rights away to Telepac Networks Incorporated.
I need a motion on that. Motion by Mr. Glavine, need a second. I'll go ahead and second it, that's the first reading. Uh, ordinance A, second reading.
Ordinance amending certain provisions of Article Two of Chapter Five concerning buildings.
And that was motion by? Mr. Lawrence, okay, Mr. Lawrence, you have any questions on it?
As far as I understand, uh, chief, but it's just changing to two thousand and three to two thousand and eighteen, it's strictly a date change.
Okay.
Nothing else changed, I don't think.
Dr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add to Mr. Lawrence's comments.
Okay, anyone else? I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. Resolution B?
Resolution finding and determining that Resolution Six thirteen eighteen, adopted on November sixth, was duly published as required by law, and no sufficient protest has been filed.
Need a motion on B?
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Glavine. Second, was that Dr. Tisdale? Oh, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Barrett? Any questions? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, um, and I know that this is, uh, this deals with, um, this deals with us moving, part of the process in us moving forward on a fourteen million dollar bond issue. Correct, and I know that, uh, what we typically do, as I recall, is there's a list of proposed projects. In other words, what we'll be spending the money on at some point, I don't expect you to have a, a list of those proposed projects yet, but at some point, we will have a list of what we're gonna spend this money on, correct?
Same list you had before, sir.
Okay, is it still-
No changes since then.
Is it still a proposed list?
It's still a proposed list, it has to be a proposed list.
Well, it, and I understand, you and I have had this conversation before, it does, and, and it doesn't have to be, I mean, you could prioritize what's on the list, and as we complete them, we go as far down the list as we can, and we may get farther down the list than we anticipated, or less far down the list, depending on what the bids come in and what the work actually costs to do. But, uh, the only reason I mention this is, uh, is again, I go back to Station Ten, that we did build with the certificates of participation, that's just still a, uh, a bone in my throat, because, uh, that's, uh, something that I don't necessarily thought we needed at that time. That, uh, we could've done other repairs in the city, uh, at other projects, and use that money a little more wisely, but that's, that's my only comment. At some point, I wish we could say, here's what we're gonna do with the money, and what we hear is, here's what we're probably gonna do with the money. And what we end up doing is not always what we thought we were gonna do, at least it wasn't in my case, I'm trying to learn and grow from that experience. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I mean, all this, this is, uh, the procedural process and what we've, uh, discussed in prior meetings, it's been duly published, there's been no one that has, uh, protested the publication of what we're trying to do to issue the bonds. Uh, the list is the list, they require us to say, here, here are some projects, nothing can go forward until this council, uh, approves anything on that list, or anything in addition to that list that may come up for the fourteen million. Now, that being said, earlier, uh, during your report, we talked about three bridges, which could be included, or would be included once these bonds are passed, as a funding mechanism, uh, for some of those, correct?
That's correct, sir, and I feel like it's the administration's job to push these projects as close to start date as we can get them.
Okay.
We are required, when we borrow money, there's a timeline on how fast we have to spend it.
So, this is simply, we've published it, there's been no protest, and we just need to approve that we, we are following the procedure. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barrett? No questions? Mr. Demme? Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
My question is, are we borrowing fourteen million or not?
Not yet.
Now, big discussion for about like four, five months, we're gonna borrow you up to fourteen million. Wasn't borrowing fourteen million, could've borrowed ten million, y'all made those statements, are we borrowing fourteen million? So, you borrowing fourteen million dollars, no matter what we wanna do? I'm just trying to say, so, we never ever decided we were borrowing fourteen million. Well, I mean, that was the thing, you know, we always discuss, if I borrow ten million, might borrow eight million, we were borrowing up to fourteen million, so you just borrowing fourteen million dollars. You know, and are we gonna use this fourteen million? The first thing we're gonna do is pave the streets like we're supposed to? That's the project we all talked about when we started borrowing money. Not all these other proj, the project was to take care of all the streets that need to be paved, and all through the city. Not the ones under construction, I'm talking about a lot of stuff elsewhere. Yeah, sir, my thing is, the people that talk and ask questions, you gonna borrow your money, or you gonna pave the streets? Ain't worried about nothing else, are you gonna pave the streets? That's for the purpose of the money, that's why I tell them, our goal is to pave the streets, to take care of the streets. All the other projects, they weigh down the line, the people want you to pave the streets, you gotta have that in your head by now, that's all they talk about. You gotta have that in your head, you even gotta listen, you know, they want you to pave the streets, ain't worried about the rest of the stuff. Yeah.
Alright, George, anything else?
Nah, that's it, I mean, that's, one of these days you gonna pay attention, everybody, you know?
Alright, we're gonna call for the question, all in favor? Okay, we got six, seven zero, resolution B carries. Uh, policy number C, Lucy.
Resolution approving the employment of Wise Carter Child and Care Way as Bond Counsel for the Mississippi Development Bank Bond in the amount of fourteen million dollars.
I'll move it.
Much my, Mr.-
I'll second it.
Much my, Mr. Glavine, second by Dr. Tisdale, any questions, George?
Yeah, these prices, either with original prices, the seventy-five hundred to six thousand, or those are the same prices they've been before, the fees? Hello?
As you know, we have to have a bond counsel.
Say again?
We have a good bond counsel, we have a bond counsel, and it's a lot less expensive than ones we've had in the past.
I'm Jane Maynard, your bond counsel. We came before you, I think back in April, with an engagement letter to act as bond counsel for these bonds, and at that time, we thought we were doing straight general obligation bonds. The administration, I believe, is recommending now, you know, the last resolution was in the alternative, to either do, uh, general obligation bond by publication and competitive bid, or go through the Mississippi Development Bank, where we issue one bond to the development bank, and then they issue bonds to the public. Our financial advisor has recommended that we're gonna get a better interest rate going through the development bank, and when your bond issues get to be over ten or twelve million dollars, like this one, may or may not, that's still up to you. Um, there is a cost savings on the interest rate for going through the development bank. The transaction costs, however, of going through the development bank are higher, because they charge a fee. Um, this resolution doesn't really ask the council to hire the underwriter, cause technically, the underwriter works for the development bank, but the development bank wants the council to approve and select the underwriter. And so, the administration has negotiated an underwriting discount with them of point eight-two-five percent, which is a reasonable rate for this size of a deal. Their underwriters' council is only charging seventy-five hundred, which, in my opinion, is a very reasonable rate. Your city attorney, as you typically do when you do bonds, we have to ask him for an opinion, that all the contracts signed by the city are valid, and he gets a fee for that. The statute authorizes up to one percent of the principal amount of the bonds, there are some local council who ask for that much money. Mr. Abide is only asking for six thousand dollars, which is a very reasonable rate. And then my rate for doing the competitive issue bonds, this twenty-four thousand five hundred, I've asked for an additional ten thousand to do it through the development bank if we ultimately go that route, because for bond counsel, that's like doing two different bond issues. And it's not twice the amount of work, but it's probably one point five to one point seven-five times the amount of work. So, um, I, of course, am biased, but I think that's a reasonable rate. So, um, so some of these fees in here are new, they are not in the stuff we brought for you last spring, because at that time, we weren't contemplating going through the development bank.
How much you saving in the interest rate? What's the difference, y'all, once you're just a different system, so what are we saving?
I think the analysis that they showed us, and I'm sorry I didn't bring that with me, I think it was like point two-two percent is typically what you save going through them. Don't hold me to that, I can find you that analysis, we've got it somewhere. That's our interest rate savings? Okay. I'll take Mr. Abide's word for that.
Well, so, give me a little more understanding, we're saving how much on the interest rate?
Jason back there? Get up here. It's your job.
I'll yield.
Thank you, Jason.
I mean, I, I think the net will be, will be a, a pretty good savings, I'm gonna let Jason speak to that.
It will, just looking back at the history that, uh, we've had lately, competitive sales versus negotiated sales, there is a slight perception, uh, in the market, or at least, there seems to be, that bonds issued through the development bank are slightly higher credit quality than bonds issued through a city government in Mississippi itself. The development bank is a much more frequent issuer than any issuer, and local issuer in the state of Mississippi, so it's something that's familiar to them. The development bank doesn't pledge its moral obligation in this sense, I wonder sometimes if the market really knows that, because the market kinda acts like it does. We didn't ask for that this time, y'all don't need to ask for that from the development bank. Another thing that with a negotiated sale, we're able to do is more, uh, more control over what the underwriter charges. We were able to negotiate with the underwriter that the city's been working with, Raymond James, for that rate. Uh, I've seen underwriters' discounts, you know, up to one point two-five to two percent on some smaller issuers. This at point eight-two-five is very reasonable, and the underwriters' discount is the biggest part of the cost of issuance of any, of any bond issue.
So, again, I'm sorry, what was the underwriters' discount?
Point eight-two-five percent.
Right, so that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of fourteen million dollar bond.
Yes.
And so, what are we saving, even if, even if that underwriters' discount, if we don't do it through the Mississippi Development Bank, then we don't pay that underwriters' discount?
No, you will pay an underwriters' discount, you just won't see it necessarily, it'll be in the pricing of the bonds.
So, that's, my question is, just what is that price difference? I know you said, well, you pay more in this one, and you save some in this one, so-
We're able to negotiate the underwriters' discount, whereas on a competitive sale, you're not.
I, I get that, I'm asking about what the numbers are, when you say we're gonna save on interest rate, what does that break down to, versus we're gonna pay more on transitional costs? Or transactional costs, that's what Ms. Maynard just stated, so I wanna know what the difference actually is financially.
I'd have to get on that a little bit more and, and look at it, I've done some analysis on that, I can share that with y'all. But, when I looked at this, going the negotiated route, uh, made the most sense, I thought, in this case, for y'all, and that is my recommendation. And I can provide some backing, some backing documentation for that to y'all. Uh, understand, though, that with a competitive sale, it is very difficult to determine what the underwriter has actually charged. It's not disclosed like it is with a negotiated sale.
So, you're basically talking about point four percent? The one-two-five to point eight-two, so you're talking about?
It could be, it could be, it could be anything, but it, point eight-two-five is, is really low for Mississippi, from what I've seen. Uh, that particular underwriter starts out much higher, most of them do. But she was willing, their, that firm was willing to negotiate down to that point, she started off at a little bit over one.
And Jason, your fee is the same either way we go, correct?
Either way you go, my fee does not change one way or the other.
And what's your, you have an opinion based on what you've seen of other cities or counties, as far as our bond counsel, our-
Y'all's bond counsel fees are lower, your cost of issuance exclusive of underwriters' discount, because that's not really considered part of issue, but the cost of issuance is going to be much lower than is typical around the state. You see wide ranges, um, y'all have done a very good job on your last couple of bond issues that controlling that a little bit more. Having people under contract like me, having people under contract like Jane helps with that. The fee that I'll charge y'all will be much less than what you've paid in the- Uh, the fee that I'll charge y'all will be much less than what you've paid in the past for an FA. And that's part of the benefit of going out for an RFP and getting that pricing back in advance. And like I said, regardless of what I recommend to y'all, my fee does not change. It is what it is based on the RFP that I submitted a response to, that y'all accepted last April.
So overall, you said we saving money?
Overall, you're saving money.
Any other questions? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call for the question on C. All in favor? Seven, zero, motion carries. Resolution D.
Resolution determining necessity of invoking an authori-, excuse me, the authority granted to municipalities to determine a tax increment financing public hearing.
Need a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion my Dr. Tisdale, need a second? Alright, Mr. Glavine, we got a second. Any questions, George?
Yeah, exactly what we doing here. Here we go again.
She's gonna get off the bond counsel clock and...
Say again?
She's gonna get off the bond counsel clock and put on her tax increment clock.
I know we always charge something.
Um, this is actually related to bonds, and it's a formality, but it's a statutory formality. Um, in order to be able to issue tax increment financing bonds from time to time when you want to, the city has to have a redevelopment plan. And way back in nineteen ninety-seven, the city adopted a redevelopment plan. And all of the TIF bonds that the city has issued since then, like, um, Margaritaville, the road project back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and two, um, this Walmart TIF you did a year or so ago, were all done pursuant to, and this redevelopment plan. You adopted individual plans for each project, but they were all done under the authority of the redevelopment plan. Um, the city is contemplating doing a couple of more TIF financings. And I looked at the redevelopment plan, which was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven, and it only covers the boundaries of the city that were in existence in nineteen ninety-seven. It also refers to a comprehensive plan that has not been in effect since at least two thousand nine. I think the current comprehensive plan is the two thousand nine adoption. So all this redevelopment plan that we're asking you to approve today is an amendment and restatement of the nineteen ninety-seven plan that updates it to include all of the current boundaries of the city. And it incorporates the existing two thousand nine comprehensive plan, and as that may be amended from time to time, because what we were working under had become a little nonsensical.
What is a two thousand and nine plan?
Excuse me?
What is a two thousand and nine plan?
Um, it's on the website. Where's Mr. Creel?
I just wanna approve any kind of plan that's not feasible, because I have to be able to look at it. I don't need a little website, I need it, I need paper in front of me. I don't need a website. I mean, so, do we actually have a plan set up, and where did this plan come from?
I believe it was adopted in two thousand and nine, and it's broken down by neighborhoods, but...
And? Where is it? That's what I, I mean, that's what we need, is we changed it something from nineteen ninety-seven, so you changing the date to two thousand and nine, another plan, you going throughout the whole city?
We're not changing, we're not changing the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan. We're just, that's the plan that's currently in effect. We're just incorporating that into the re-, the updated redevelopment plan. We're not making any changes to the two thousand and nine plan.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that we doing the right thing for the city, where you put enough, where we actually growing to, where you making these plans that, oh, we just doing the whole city?
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So what you're in essence saying, we're taking that two thousand and nine plan and like the employment figures, the tax figures, the population figures, we're updating all that?
Oh, the, um, the, the tables that discuss the population and employment and that sort of thing, that's not part of the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan. That's just... We're updating those numbers, and then when we get to the part about, basically what the redevelopment plan says is when you do a redevelopment project, it has to conform with the redevelopment plan, which incorporates the two thousand and nine...
Which we haven't done, and we just say the necessity to, to do that, so we have to pull the trigger on the week?
Right, so if, if we come back to do another TIF project... The nineteen ninety-seven redevelopment plan will become the amended and restated redevelopment plan of twenty eighteen. But it incorporates your land use plan, which is the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan, which you are free to amend anytime you want, and it will automatically flow through to the redevelopment plan. So this makes no change to your two thousand and nine comprehensive development.
So, because everybody's sitting on the edge of their chair out there with this discussion. I just, if I understand this, just to simplify it, uh, if we looked at a map twenty years ago, that said that was the redevelopment plan, or comprehensive plan was, uh, but under or within the city boundaries, since we annexed what is now Ward Seven, all we're doing is plugging in Ward Seven?
Essentially. All, everything we have annexed since nineteen ninety-seven is being plugged in.
Wells Ferry, a couple of other little lots and ends, but basically Ward Seven. That's a great, thanks.
And the standards that you have to meet under this new redevelopment plan are the current comprehensive plan.
God, thank you, thank you, Jen.
Sorry, I get so tongue-twisted in that.
Any other questions? Alright, we're gonna call for a question. All in favor of D? Seven, zero, motion carries. I need a motion on the consent agenda? Got a motion by Mr. Barrett, I'll go ahead and second that, and I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Barrett. Could you turn on your mic?
On L, this is the change order on, um, Larkin subdivision. This is just simply saying that without amending the budget at all, we're just adding the paving into that project, is that correct?
So I recall that is a, that is a deduction in their contract price, a reduction in their contract price.
But is that, that's including the paving of all the roads, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And do we, I know that we discussed this a week or so ago, do you know when that's... Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. I, I have one, if you can go to someone else, I had another one on here that I was gonna...
Okay, um, Mr. Glavine?
I just have one, H, what is this H thing? In Seattle, doesn't it rain in Seattle?
That, that's where you count.
Oh, Seattle, yeah, that's, uh, uh, actually, um, going to Seattle about the homeless. Uh, I'll be going with, uh, Kay Miller and, um...
Do, do we have a travel budget for that?
Uh, yeah, well, actually, it's gonna be, it's reimbursable if we'll accept the funds from the Knight Foundation.
So what, what's the budget for, five grand?
I think it's, uh, three, I believe it's three. It's probably no more than three.
Alright.
I think we capped it at three, didn't we Lucy? Three, yes. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I just, um, can you explain I?
The Crest Stairwell?
What is it, which one?
Right, I is a, um, I think just to the west side of the Crest Building, there's a stairwell that, uh, was put up when they, uh, opened up and was required by the fire department, and there is, uh, I think it's like a ninety-year right for them to use it. But they have not been in existence, they've closed since twenty sixteen. The agreement says we have the right to ask them to abandon the usement, and we could take it back. We have to write them a letter and give them notice of abandonment. The bank owns it now. So it's, uh, it's just part of something we came across as part of Howard Avenue, looking at things. That's a pretty nice avenue, alleyway that could connect to the back parking lot there. And, uh, it's something to give us an option to, to let the bank know they... I think it's also sort of a, uh, kind of a waystation for, for certain homeless folks to...
I know when we put that up, they put that on, they would put it on the street. It was the only way they could get to the, have a fire escape, so they put it out there, but that was, used to be a street right there. So, I thought it was crazy idea, but that's the only way you could do it, because Joe Boni would let them do anything else.
It could have been done to the rear of the building, but I think they just decided to put it there, so...
He just blocked the street with a stairway, you know?
And then, and then J is just, uh, the eighty-twenty match that we're agreeing to on that, um, sidewalk project, correct?
That, that's correct, Councilman. That's, that's one of three M dot MOUs that are on the agenda. That's, that's just going back on the agreement with the M dot that we, you know, play by their rules and they'll give us the eighty, eighty percent.
Alright, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Doc, Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes, on item K, I ha- have a few, Felix, on item K, this deals with the Cedar Lake Bridge, and Mike, I talked with you yesterday to see, it said, uh, there was a statement in there that said funds may be rescinded if they're not, not obligated on or before. And I assume there's supposed to be a date there, it just had an N slash A. Alright, then on item N? Uh, on item N, alright, so we're, we're getting a quarterly payment on the, uh, mill from the county. And we're using, I think it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand of that for electrical upgrade at, at the Point Cadet Marina. And the other hundred thousand is going to the living, uh, shoreline, shoreline. And I'm thinking, Mike, and talking with you, there were some alternate bid items, I think that we...
Correct, there were, there were a number of alternate bid items that were not awarded at the time we awarded the contract. As you know, that's under construction right now by DCD down on the thing. Some, some of the, uh, alternate bid items were a shade structure, sixty-one thousand dollars, some tables and benches, some decorative concrete. So this'll allow us to, to, uh, add those additional items.
They're all practical things, though, basically, items, okay? On item O, that's the, uh, Mardi Gras museum. Only question I have, will the city receive a copy of the, of the museum's annual audit within thirty days of the completion of that audit? Typically, that's, so I think that's what we've done with the other museums.
It, it is, I'm not sure if the thirty days is in the, uh, MOE, in the agreement, but I'll check it. It, it is, I'm not sure if the thirty days is in the, uh, MO, in the agreement, but I'll check it.